Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The time is seven o'clock and we're going to officially call this meeting to order. Deb, would you please do roll call?
Counsel Williams, Counsel Hancy.
Here.
Counsel Purser.
Sure.
Counsel Parrish. Counsel Downs.
Here.
Counsel Miller.
Present.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to rise, take a moment of silence, collect your thoughts, and then we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we have an agenda set before us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Great. With that, need a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
First and a second, would you please poll council?
Counsel Williams, Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Purser.
Yes.
Counsel Parrish.
Yes.
Counsel Downs and Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We have no proclamations this evening, so we're going to jump right into public participation. This section is set aside for city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issues and will not take any official action under this section of the agenda. We ask that people limit their comments to three minute period, and if you come up, please state your name and full address. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Please, sir, come on up, state your name and address.
My name is Daniel Emery. My address is nine three zero Squire Court. However, before I speak on my own behalf, I've been asked to speak on the behalf of Martha Matthews at nine two two Squire Court, Catherine Brooke Peters from nine two two and a half Squire Court, and David and Lindsay Hassler at nine twenty six Squire Court. You probably can guess that this is in regards to the Excel power line proposal that is going to be, I'm assuming, or I guess is going to be on your desk for a decision. These three homeowners on the south side of Squire Court are curious as to why such a bad proposal is ending up in front of city council. The initial proposal of suspending power lines above, I believe what you call River Park, what we call the back nine of the disc golf course is just a bad idea. Apparently, there was a proposal placed to bury three of those towers through the River Park. Again, that's a bad proposal. These three citizens are very curious as to how we got to that proposal. Now, I'd like to speak on my behalf again, Daniel Emery, nine three zero Squire Court. You can call me Dan, Daniel, or Danny. I respond to all of them. Born and brought up a Steeler fan in Cleveland, Ohio. Moved out here because I thought I found myself a piece of paradise. I've got a great location. I look north, I look over the disc golf course, over the river, over the city, completely unencumbered by power lines. I look to the west, completely unencumbered view by power lines. That's why I bought my house. I didn't buy it for the geothermic aspect of it. It's that underground house, four car garage at the end of Squire Court. Whole east side's underground, whole west side is open to this cauldron of the sun that does nothing that burn it. I bought it for the view. I bought it for the privacy. Grand Valley Power buried all of the electric lines out there. The only suspended line is the line that was there prior to those people buying their homes. The property value, the quality of life, has already been baked into that. I understand some folks even bought a house that had a power line in their backyard. I would never do that. I certainly can't fault them for wanting to get that power line out of their backyard. I'm disturbed that over a three year process, Excel was only able to come up with four options, all of which are above ground? In this day and age with the fire problems we have, I heard some of y'all talking about the hurricane down in Florida. You know, there's some houses down there that were built with concrete hurricane proof windows, and all their utility lines are underground. Guess what? They're fine. Absolutely fine. Please understand, if the proposal goes through to suspend those power lines behind my house or partially bury them, partially suspend them, you will be incurring significant damage on me, both in property value and quality of life. And as such, I would certainly expect to be made whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Sorry, I couldn't remember their names.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak under the public participation section? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public participation and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met part of the time they come before council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. Members of the council may ask that an item be removed. I'm up. Council may ask that an item be removed from the consent section and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consent section will then be approved. A member of the council may vote no on a specific item without asking that be removed from the consent section for full discussion. Any items that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the consent agenda. So with that, I'd like to open up the consent agenda for public participation. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak on anything that's on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring this back to council. Anybody have any concerns or questions on any items on the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none, we would need a motion in a second.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as before us.
We have a first and a second. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? All right, with that, Deb, would you kindly poll council?
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Purser.
Yes.
Counsel Parrish. Counsel Downs. Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Williams. Motion passes six zero.
Right, thank you very much. We have no public hearings this evening, so with that, we're going to jump right into our administrative agenda. And first item on the list is SGM. There's an introduction in on capital projects. And our city manager, Michael Bennett, will you kindly take this and run with it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have John Bolden with SGN, who will be giving an update on our capital projects and how we plan to navigate some of the nuances with specifically two of our larger road projects that naturally are disruptive when you when you have to do those improvements in sewer lines and how we're, you know, letting you all know some of the ways we are working to mitigate those and but first, as as we'll invite John to come up to the podium up here, but I want to, I just want to introduce John. He, as you know, currently SGM, we are contracting with SGM, and we started, we had planned to do this originally to help us with a bottleneck of, not a bottleneck, but the help help us with a larger scale of capital projects we had at one point in time. A little bit larger than our internal team could handle all at once. But then we also had a transition where we, where our city engineer departed, so we we have been utilizing SGM a little bit more than we had originally planned, and it's and it's been absolutely incredibly helpful, and we really appreciate the work that they are doing. They, it's a whole team, but John is actually spending a day in the office here a week so that he can be available. We're still only paying for the work that he's doing, but he's been willing to do that so that there's better not just phone calls and emails, but the ability and scheduled meetings, but the ability for the staff to enter interact on a regular basis in person and have that just built in. So we, we can't say enough about the suite of services that SGM provides really helps because we have to dive into so many different areas of expertise within engineering. And that, I think the mixture of our of our three person in-house team working with our planning and development director and then working with SGM has been, actually has been extremely productive for us, and so John's going to talk a little bit about that. So I'll stop talking so John can give the update and then, but just wanted to introduce him, thank him for being here, and John, the floor is yours for the update. Thank you.
Some, thank you, Mike. I just want to introduce myself. My name's John Bolden, fourth generation, Western Colorado. My grandfather came over about a hundred years ago to Gunnison to help dig the tunnel. And since then, we've moved around a little. I was born in Moab, graduated in nineteen ninety-four. And I moved around a little since then, but I did move to Fruta in two thousand eight, which for those of you that were here then was not a great time to come over and start an office, but it worked. It worked, and over the years, I've made a lot of, a lot of connections in this community. I love Fruta. I plan to retire here, and I want to thank you guys for hiring us. I it's, it's allowed me to work closer to the things that affect me. I represent SGM, but there's a hundred and twenty-four of us, and I'm taking credit for all of their work. I get to be the public face of it. I charge, you guys have paid me for my work, but a lot of it that I've done has been other people's work. Coming to Fruta, and we've worked on on projects in Fruta ever since, I think, two thousand thirteen was the first project with an amphitheater. We've worked on the Coacapelli Trail. It's an honor to help the staff here. They're all great. There's just not enough of them, and they, the three of them are doing more work than probably ten people in my company. And and you guys are lucky to have them. Since I've been here, I'm just constantly impressed. They juggle so many balls. They in the meeting this morning, Steve was talking about helping with one of the, one of the Clear Networks installation problems. It had nothing to do with him, but he wanted Fruta citizens to have a good experience. So part of what I've been doing is just backstopping them. You know, right now, we're doing a lot of traffic stuff. In the future, it'll be something else. And I, and I have been able to work here a couple days a week, and I've got to know what they're doing. I've got to know their strengths, their weaknesses, and there's not a lot. Right now, they are buried. They are absolutely buried. You guys have the good fortune of being able to build some really big, really interesting projects. One of them's Nineteen Road. I think you're probably pretty familiar with it, but I'm going to give you an update. So we've had MA construction selected for almost six months now, and they've been helping us. And during this process, we, they, I say we, I consider myself a member of the team, but I wasn't there, but in July, they had an open house, and it was a doozy. And they got a lot of, a lot of feedback. And and they listened. You know, they took it. Some of it was hard, but they took it, and some of what they've changed on that, originally, there was going to be one bike lane, which was going to be a separated path. That was, that was a little more intrusive for those properties than they wanted, you know, put people closer to their houses. So some of the changes they've made, they've put in two bike paths, one on each side of the road, and then they'll have an eighteen inch buffer to help protect people. They've realigned the intersections. They've made, made them make more sense. They've shortened the project. You know, they're trying to be fiscally responsible with the money that you guys are spending there, and so the project shortened from J two road back to the intersection. They're still going to run the utilities through. They're working really good with a lot of different entities in the valley. One of them being the Grand Valley Irrigation Company. They've, they've worked with them. They've addressed their needs. They've addressed all of the questions the public has. You know, a lot of people are going to be unhappy with the construction. It will, it will impact people. It is going to close traffic in that direction, and it's gonna, it's gonna be no fun. But they're taking steps to minimize those impacts, and they're listening to people, so. The other projects, the South Mesa Project. I don't know that you guys have, have you been very involved in that? It's it's from the circle down to the highway, and it's another one. It's going to impact people. And it's going to impact them in a serious way. And so right now, we're working with the community members. Some of the challenges that we're encountering, the thrift store has posts in the sidewalk. They're corroding. We have to figure out how to do this project without impacting them. They get a mountain of supplies every day or every week dropped off. And there's not an easy way to do that. We're looking at different ways to phase the project. Some of the things we're looking at may draw the project out longer, but have less impact. So they might be lane closures instead of full road closures. Right now, we're still working through some of the details. We're still working through right of way acquisition. And we hope to start building it next spring if everything goes well, but it's going to take a long time. And we're trying to phase it where it doesn't impact the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival or the Fall Fest. So there'll be different times when you'll, you'll get people saying, why is this taking forever? It's because we're trying not to impact people permanently and put any businesses out of, out of business. I think that's all I had. Was there anything else, Dan? Any questions for me?
Thank you for coming into the office and, you know, working with the team.
I love it. I get away and it's quiet here. I don't have a phone. It doesn't ring here.
Yet, yet.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. I'll follow that one. So next up, twenty twenty-five budget presentation about infrastructure and core services. And our assistant city manager, Shannon Bassman, you're up.
As always, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council to present to you tonight. This is our first of several budget presentations on the draft twenty twenty-five budget. At our workshop in September, as is required by our city charter, we presented the first draft of the budget to you, and now over the next several meetings, we'll be presenting a lot of the detail from the budget as it goes and prepares for adoption in early December. So this meeting is really focused on our Capital Projects Fund, our Public Works General Fund, and then also our Enterprise Funds as well. For the new members of the council, here's just a brief overview of some of the things that we will be discussing soon. October twenty-second, we'll have our city council workshop reviewing outside agency funding requests. November fifth, we'll talk about our police department, parks and rec, and then our Fruta Community Center Fund. November nineteenth, we talk about economic health and development, and then our budget slated for adoption in December third. Tonight's presentation, as I briefly just touched upon, we'll be talking about the twenty twenty-five capital projects and it trends across all fund as far as cursed core services, delivery, and then our enterprise funds as well. So to kick it off, our budget is, there is less to cover for these budget presentations, which is always a good thing. Just because this budget is a little smaller than previous year budgets. You know, this year, after transfers, we have about forty-two million dollars of expenses and revenues. But we are spending into the red for a number of those big capital projects, Nineteen Road, South Mesa Street, Maple Street Bridge, et cetera. So a lot of those will be carried over into next year's budget. But overall, expenses next year are twenty-six point five million dollars. It's a decrease of twenty-two percent compared to the twenty twenty-four budget. And again, a lot of that is due to these one-time projects that are very costly and expensive that we're hoping to achieve and complete sometime next year. Revenues, twenty-six point four million dollars. This is all part of the all-fund summary, which I will make available to the city council by the end of the month. But this is just kind of a snapshot of what we're seeing so far in the first draft budget. This is, again, a decrease of three percent compared to the twenty twenty-four budget, again, mostly related to capital projects and other one-time expenses. And the use of funds, we do have one million dollars budgeted to be used next year. All, almost all of it's in the general fund for maintenance items, capital projects, and also some capital equipment that we need to replace as well. Here is just another overview of some of our expenses. Out of all the expenses between all the funds, about nineteen point six millions for operations. So your salaries, your benefits, your purchased professional services like SGM, attorneys, stuff like that. We have two point one million dollars in debt and then four point eight million dollars in capital across all funds. And looking at the revenue side, we have about twenty-six point four million dollars estimated in revenues. As you can see, taxes continue to be our biggest source of revenues, and most of that goes to the general fund, although we do have a few smaller funds as well that are funded through taxes, mostly our marketing and promotion, Economic Development Fund, and also our Public Places Fund. The next big chunk of revenues is eight point three million dollars charges for services, which is, you know, the things you pay for your sewer service each month, your trash service, your irrigation waters while your community center passes, et cetera. Three point two million dollars in air governmental revenues refers to grants and also revenues that we receive from the state of Colorado or the federal government. Then we have a few other smaller buckets of revenues that we'll touch upon in greater detail at future presentations. So this presentation, we changed it a few years ago to kind of cover our capital projects fund, but where the bulk of the money is being spent. This year is slightly different because capital projects are down, which is very intentional. At the August City Council Workshop, we went through the five-year capital improvement project, and we've had so many big projects we've been trying to wrap up on a year-to-year basis. We figured it'd be great to take a step back, focus on maintenance for a year before we wrap up and start some of those larger projects in twenty twenty-six and kind of beyond. We've been able to get a lot of things done. You know, recently, we were all at the Reed Park Celebration, which was great. The water slide is going to be hopefully open very soon, pending public health approval. We've been able to cross a lot of things off the list, which has been very great to see. So again, focus of our capital projects for twenty twenty-five, we want to continue implementation of our new updated five-year capital improvement plan, which will be adopted by the council in December. Maintenance, you know, really focusing on maintenance and things that we can help out to help help with our core service delivery, but also, you know, our parks and everything else as well. And we also want to focus on, you know, John talked a lot about capacity and everything else. We want to make sure that we can wrap up some of those large projects next year, so we have the capacity to start on the next one, some of those other things. So there are several projects that will begin into, or that will continue into next year. Nineteen Road being one, South Mesa Street, the Greenway Drive sewer line, and then also the Maple Street Bridge. Not all of those are budgeted, but they will be recreated by council early next year. So we can continue with those projects. So to kind of kick off with all the capital projects, so our, one of our largest projects in this proposed budget is five hundred thousand dollars for the overlay program. This, we bumped up the budget quite a bit this year to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to accommodate kind of our needs based upon the feedback that we got from our roadway assessment project that we did in the prior year. This number will probably slightly go up in next draft, in the next draft budget, just because as we've identified kind of all the overlay needs for next year, I would probably want to increase that to make sure we have enough budget for overlays. These are the streets that have been identified for overlays next year, quite a few. This is in the capital projects fund on the budget, if you want to refer to this in the future, if you need to reference these. The next big project in the twenty twenty-five budget is to begin the process of making improvements to J Road. So with the middle school moving from its old location, just a couple hundred yards that way to the Fruta nine building, now the high school, now having all four grades, we recognize that there's a need to make improvements to J Road. So the first step in that is to begin with the right-of-way acquisition. So in the future, when we do get to design and construction, we have that right-of-way available, and we can also work on the design and be able to complete that and get ready for construction in the future. The final project will create a new road corridor, improve traffic flow for pedestrians and vehicles near Fruta Monument High School and the Fruta Middle School. Smaller projects, we have a hundred thousand dollars for drainage improvements over at the Conwood subdivision. This has already begun. We've started to remove some of the drainage issues, you know, vegetation overgrowth in there, so this will also help with that. Police departments getting some new AC units, which is definitely much needed, and also they're getting a coat on the roof as well. Some of those units are near the end of their lives. They need to be replaced. Gets very hot here in the summer, so definitely want to make sure that they're cool and also not have any issues with the roof in the future. So we have a hundred and five thousand dollars budgeted for improvements to the police department, and out of those sixty-fives for the HVAC units and forties for the roof. Moving on to some of the Parks and Rec related projects, we have forty thousand budgeted to continue work at Snook's Bottom. Very excited. The vault toilet that was included in this year's budget is almost wrapped up. I think they're doing concrete work this week, so happy to see that done as we continue to make improvements to Snook's Bottom. The next improvements that we're excited about is to complete the trail around the west side of the lake. So what that'll look like is it'll be that same kind of soft surface gravel trail that you see on the east side as you're making the turn and before it goes into kind of the road, which is uneven and has some accessibility issues. So they'll kind of make that consistent, also remove a lot of the vegetation with this project. We also are applying for another grant to help out with some of the vegetation removals as well, and hopefully to plant more trees out there next year. And moving on to the projects that will be continued into next year. Since we do have a few new faces on the city council, a lot of the projects, just if they're budgeted in the current year, will actually zero out in the budget, and those funds will be re-appropriated early next year. That's intentional. It's just because we don't know how much we're going to spend at the end of the year, so it's much easier to reappropriate whatever was unspent beginning next year instead of having to try and identify a number and then reduce those appropriations later. So three big projects that will be re-appropriated early next year. That's Nineteen Road, which we've just talked about. South Mesa Street, which has been on the slideshow. I think this is the third year, but hopefully that'll wrap up mostly next year, and then the Greenway Drive sewer line as well, which was a pretty significant sewer replacement project this year. We've started the work on that. We've went through all the railroad kind of things that we've been working through, and we also got a grant to help offset with that. So yeah, sewer replacement is coming in that direction very soon. One that is re-appropriated, though, is the Maple Street Bridge. Again, making very good progress on this. We've been working on the design and right-of-way. This is funded through a one point seven five million dollar contribution from the federal government, the congressional directed spending, and then we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's being provided to us from Mesa County as a contribution to it. We hope to have the bid complete in the spring and the summer, and construction starts next year in the fall. And kind of a light year for capital projects, but that kind of concludes at least that portion of the presentations. I'll stop there in case anyone has any questions on the council.
If not, I do.
I do, but you can go first. Appreciate you talking about why we appropriate versus change the budget and move that over. Let's see, you answered that one.
So with J Road, I just want to make sure it was commented publicly. So we're looking at obtaining the right-of-ways sooner than later, just in case development happens, because we won't do anything to extend east of where our cities are until a development happens, which causes us to to build out further infrastructure, right? So it's just in preparation for the potential.
Was this in reference to Nineteen Road or?
J Road, yeah, yeah.
Going from that is correct.
Limits from J Road to Nineteen Road, I guess, or?
From Fremont to Nineteen Road, yeah, correct. And one thing that wasn't, that wasn't, well, Dan Karas, planning director for the city of Fruta, but one thing that wasn't mentioned is that we're also trying to team up a Safe Routes to School grant with that J Road project, which is kind of why we're starting with the right-of-way acquisition in twenty twenty-five, just because we've learned and then relearned and relearned again, that the right-of-way acquisition just takes some time. And so in order to put together a complete project that we can deliver on time, you know, we need to start next year.
So it's just, we'll get that accomplished, which I very much appreciate staying on top of that, but further development of infrastructure wouldn't happen until projects would necessitate that. One year, ten years, twenty years, we just don't know until property owners move forward, correct?
That is correct.
Shit.
Just so understanding of how, because we've seen development or we see nineteen road, huge, huge project going on. And then the potential of or near future, or I guess in some future of J. So when they go to decide what side of the road they're doing acquisitions on, is it just from where the center of the road would be? And then they determine how far out, even so if the world, the roads kind of squirrely right now, they would, you just straighten it out and so some property owners might lose ten feet on one side. And then further down it might be twelve feet. It's just, is it just all off like the, the center line of the road? Is that how you kind of go about?
It depends on whether the property owners own technically to the center of the road. And like the right away is essentially a prescriptive right away. Or if it's a proclamated right away, or if it's a deeded right away. And so that's why you see different right aways that are required to be dedicated or that we're purchasing. Is it kind of depends on whether or not they're owned in fee by property owners or if they're a part of the proclamated right away, or if they've already been annexed in and dedicated to the city.
Thank you. What are you expecting for the, you were saying the overlay is five hundred thousand dollars in the budget? What do you expect?
You know, I think we'll probably restore it to this year's budget, which is five sixty. With that roadway, roadway assessment evaluation that we completed, we were able to kind of punch in, you know, what the needs are for next year. And then kind of get a better accurate based upon what we paid this year for overlays to determine that budget. That's probably closer, I was gonna just for, you know, this presentation, we do have fees that are restricted for chip seal. So I was probably gonna, you know, take some of the two hundred and ten thousand dollars that we have budgeted for chip seal next year, reduce that or well, not reduce it, but add the chip seal fees and use that difference for the additional overlays. But yeah, we're able to kind of estimate based upon all of that work we did last year of what those will cost and how much we paid this year.
Yeah, that's the wrong course.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you kind of go back to the irrigation slide? I think I just misread it, just trying to make notes at the same time.
Irrigation, you said? Oh, the, yeah, yeah, the cottonwoods, yep, yep, cottonwoods, yep.
All right, because I read that as cottonwoods is going to be a hundred thousand dollars.
The entire project is a hundred thousand dollars and that's to help with the drainage. An issue that we've had for several years over there, and we've actually already started this year with some of that removal. But this will help, you know, not just the vegetation removal, but actual infrastructure improvements up with the drainage into the future.
Is there, will anybody else be participating in helping with those costs?
For this one, we've just had our contribution, I don't know if we've had discussions on other.
Currently, we have Red Rocks is putting in a certain amount of, for the cleanup that we're doing right now.
There was help with the cleanup.
And then the drainage district is going to put in, I'm trying to remember, it was five thousand per, per year towards maintenance after that. And so we are working, Mary Elizabeth is assisting at our city attorney and working with the staff right now. And so that we can work with the district on some of the mechanics of that five thousand that they're putting towards the maintenance and who maintains, because the majority of it is in the Cottonwood subdivision. And so there, there is coordination with both Red Rock subdivision and Cottonwoods, majority is in Cottonwoods. And we're working with them on financial contributions related to the cleanup right now. And then who maintains? And we are, but there is a pretty large project to actually get it. So it doesn't, this is a reoccurring theme. So the city's assisted in cleaning up, but without the maintenance, it just gets back to where it is. And it's, it's in incredibly rough shape right now. And the pipe that serves this, this section is not adequate to serve. So there's, the engineers are looking at whether this goes back to an open ditch and that's coordination with the district or if there's an actual adequate pipe put in, which is much, much higher in price than, than the open ditch format. But what's there now does not function. And that's, so that, that's what we were trying to build in something to get to like a final solution for this, but it, but there are a lot of moving parts to make it work before we would, before we spend the project money.
So but the estimate of a hundred thousand, I'm assuming is for an open ditch.
Originally, that was what was contemplated. There's, but we've received a little pushback from the drainage district on essentially converting a, what is a regional detention facility into what is just an open ditch, which is not a practice that the city or the neighboring municipalities would entertain through the subdivision process. Those facilities would be piped because they're not, they're not technically receiving or are receiving a very small amount of water from those neighborhoods. That is essentially just the conveyance of agricultural, agricultural tailwater that goes through the subdivisions. So I think that's part of the reason why no one really is, is interested in fully taking on the maintenance of it is that they're not contributing to it. It's essentially the agricultural operations that are happening surrounding there that is contributing to it.
Thank you.
Of course. All right, moving on to kind of core service delivery. This is talk about our public works general fund and kind of what we're seeing in the proposed budget for next year. Not a lot of changes from this year, you know, we had some unfortunate bids with the chip ceiling bid. We went out once, twice, and then we actually reached out to prospective contractors about getting the chip ceiling done. But unfortunately, it didn't work out. So hopefully, you know, next year with some of these other things that are wrapping up that could free up some time in the future. So that two hundred and ten thousand is to double chip seals, South nineteen road on the south side of the interstate and also a few other areas. We're continuing to fund the sidewalk replacement program at a hundred thousand dollars per year. A lot of work being done this year at Laura Avenue and in downtown Fruit as well, but also a lot of the pedestrian safety projects like on Cherry Street by the family, by Family Health West. So these funds can help pay for those sidewalk improvements, but also we've used them for some pedestrian safety stuff as well. Bumping up road maintenance and patching to a hundred thousand dollars, this is a slight increase from the prior year. And then street striping continuing that at seventy one thousand five hundred dollars overall. In every community survey that we've ever done, the number one priority is always quality of city streets and maintaining our current traffic flow and congestion. So we fund road maintenance, capital projects related to roads pretty heavily, and you can see that in each year's budget. Overall, general fund, public works, expenses are budgeted to decrease. Kind of a trend across the whole budget, but again, that's mostly due to one time expenses. Next year, that's, or it's related to expenses from capital equipment this year. But also, you know, wrapping up, hopefully wrapping up the mountain water design, the breach design and a few other things. We do have some capital equipment that make up a good portion in public works. And that's to replace our tractor and right of way mower, hundred eighty five thousand and replacing a skid steer at sixty three thousand five hundred dollars. This is all using funds that are designated for capital equipment replacement. So each year we budget a certain amount for these replacements in the future. So we're not always just paying cash for those when the time comes. Looking at trends across all funds, I did, we did note this in the transmittal letter, you'd see some changes. One of the bigger ones that you'll see is you'll, you'll probably see that retirement contribution is going up. That's actually just a change of where those were identified in the budget the prior year. So we had a one point five percent for fifty seven matching program for our employees. So if the employee contributed at least one point five percent, they get one point five percent back from the organization. Since we are moving to the Cara Retirement Association and now they are required to contribute at least three percent, we're going to match that up to six percent to continue to work on our total benefits package and hopefully help with recruitment and retention effort. So you'll see that some like the community center fund, you'll see an increase in retirement. It might be more than the increase for doing wages, but you'll see a decrease in the line item was personnel adjustment. So you'll see those will offset one another minus the change. Supply costs are also going down. Last year, we had some pretty turbulent things come up, the utility expenses, the freeze in Texas that gas prices skyrocketed early last year. And we actually had to come back for contingency funds for, I think, the sewer fund and the Fruit of Community Center Fund to offset those costs. They're now starting to level out, our utility costs are pretty even and we expect to be right on budget for next year. And inflation continues to slow down in this slide. Last year I said slowly slowing down, it was at five percent last year. This year they're estimating about two point five percent overall. So starting to see that kind of all around as well. Personnel, which we'll discuss more in depth at our next presentation. We are recommending an increase of five percent, five to seven percent, depending on the department. And we have a 10% increase in benefit expenses, nine and a half for our health insurance. And then I believe six and a half for our dental, so you'll see that. And then again, just emphasizing this priorities on maintenance, completing those large capital projects. We also have less kind of capital equipment overall. Why you see decreases compared to the prior year budget and probably the year or the budget before that. Moving on to our enterprise funds, these are funds that are act like a business. So residents, they pay a fee for a service and in exchange for that fee, they get the service. So your sewer irrigation and trash. I will briefly go through these, but trash fund, not seeing a lot of changes next year. Waste management is requesting an increase of six percent. That's all based upon consumer price index data and they have that data and we can verify that as well. But that's what their costs are going up, so we'll pass that along to the resident. With that, we do have, as council negotiated earlier this year, the spring cleanup, the leaf pickup, which is scheduled to start next month, and then the holiday dumpster as well, where people can take any excess trash to a dumpster that we placed a little salt wash park and filled up pretty heavily last year. So not a lot of changes overall, revenue expenses, one point two million dollars up slightly from this year. Other highlights from the trash fund, we actually just hosted our e-cycle event last week or maybe the week before, and that was as popular as ever. They filled up a huge dumpster, as you can see in that photo, but also another dumpster as well. So that has been a great event, very excited. We don't have the exact amount yet, but once we will, once we get that, we'll include that in the update. And we also still need to talk about, probably not tonight, but we have about sixteen thousand dollars in single use bag fees that we'll have to appropriate in the future for some sort of use. There are restrictions on what those can be used for, but right now they're just kind of sitting and accumulating interest in our trash fund. Irrigation water fund, this is pretty straightforward, no rate changes and no changes between revenue and expenses. Yes. And then finally, moving on to our largest enterprise fund, our sewer fund. Again, seen a decrease overall compared to prior year, mostly due to those one time projects. This year we had the Greenway Drive sewer line replacement included, so decreased based upon that. We also had a few other projects included, such as the Kingsview Lift Station replacement. And we finally were able to also wrap up some of the smaller projects, like the replacement of vertical drum mixer. We'll wrap up the SCADA improvements very soon as well. So definitely encouraging to see four point nine million dollars in revenues and four point eight million dollars in expenses. Again, decreases are due to those one time expenses. We are going to recommend a two percent rate increase. Although we've made a tremendous amount of project and kind of a lot of the things on the sewer needs and the sewer assessment plan that we had a few years ago, there are still a few things that are kind of hanging out there. So we want to make sure we don't, you know, fall behind on the maintenance and also all the projects we have to do out of the plan. So that two percent will help us fund those projects into the future, but also help with our increased operational costs as well. We get a lot of discussion on, you know, with the debt, you know, our sewer rate is a lot higher than what you'd see elsewhere. So I always include this pie chart in the budget, so you can kind of see out of that fifty three dollars a month after the increase, what that goes for. And this will be in the budget, but you can see a lot of it's thirty six percent for debt, thirty three percent for the actual treatment of the wastewater, sixteen percent for collections and a few other smaller items as well.
Shannon, sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Two percent.
Yep.
But we've seen other communities with significantly higher.
Yeah.
Increases because of the lack of forecasting.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. And that's why we're trying to avoid those sixteen, seventeen, twenty dollars a month rate increases because, you know, we have these large projects that we can get some funding for, but they have to be financed. So we have to pay for that with additional debt. So two percent overall, this has been very consistent in the six years that I've been working on the city's budget. I think one year we held off on a rate increase, so we ended up doing four percent overall as compared to the two each year. But yeah, we've been very consistent with that dollar amount, it's usually about a dollar a year. Capital expenses, this is another project, so the King, Kingsview Lift Station replacement over on the south side is going to be a little more expensive than initially projected. But we did get a Department of Local Affairs grant to help offset some of those costs. But you will see, we received a guaranteed maximum price from our consultant. It's right around six ninety, so we have six sixty budgeted next year, although that may slightly change in future drafts of the budget and then other capital projects will be reappropriated early next year. As far as capital equipment, bypass pump is included in the budget for purchase next year. We've been using bypass pumps quite a bit lately. We had the sewer line outage or sewer line collapse on six and fifty back in twenty twenty one. Our H two S project, we actually had to bypass pump a lot of the materials that were going to the wastewater reclamation facility. So we're just going to purchase one of those, which will be a good asset for them out there. Roto phases, I will defer to Kimberly on what those are. And we have some small computer equipment for next year as well. Some other highlights in the sewer fund, you will see a significant increase in contingency funds. Probably the largest project we have, one of the largest projects we have on the sewer kind of capital improvement list for the next couple of years is the redundancy for the centrifuge. So we've been very successful in receiving grants to help with these sewer projects to lower the cost for fruit of residents. So we're going to apply for another grant to help with that. And the contingency funds really represent something we can put towards match for those grant applications. So if we are awarded, we have the match, we have the cash at hand, just has to be approved by council through resolution. And then treating, you know, wastewater sewer lines continues to get more expensive. So you'll also see a lot of other just general increases to support those maintenance needs into the future. All right, talked about Kingsview Lift Station, six sixty to six ninety. Just wrapping up some design stuff this year and then actual construction and replacement will occur next year. And that is actually all I have for the enterprise funds, I'll always happy to take any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions besides we have to ask Kimberly with the Roto phases?
I did look it up, but I already forgot.
Gets to come all the way up here.
Kimberly, there you go. We definitely do not have a wireless mic that can reach back there.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. So the Roto phases are for our smaller lift stations, that's a redundant pumps.
Really, before you head off. Shannon had mentioned, oh, I'm already blanking out that the, the main, the bigger pump, that's like a hundred and thirty.
Bypass pump?
Yeah. So have we been like renting them and now we're just going to buy them because we've been, we've been renting so much now, we're saying we utilize enough to justify buying? Is that what?
Yeah, we've, we've utilized them for a few of the last projects that we've completed, but it's, it's more of a safety net for us. So that if we have an emergency on one of our sewer lines, we'll have that capability in our yard to get that pump out there immediately.
Anything else for Kimberly before she goes?
Let's let her.
Thank you. I will remember the Roto phases now, yeah.
Any other questions?
I, I. But I don't have to go first.
Go for it.
Okay. And you can, you can defer this answer just until we get to the personnel one. But sure, yes, you definitely were reading my minds like, why is retirement going up so much?
Yeah.
And you're saying it's going to be pulled from another bucket. Where can you identify that bucket? Because I'm not seeing that on the, so I'm looking at page one fifty six, which is your general, which doesn't always have all the detail on it. But if I scroll down to, well, maybe it's all, has all the same accounts, but I'm just not seeing explicitly where I can vouch that the decreases.
Yeah, absolutely. So let me pull up our draft budget. So in the general fund, this personnel adjustment has always been in our non department, non departmental department or program. So let me pull this up, so you'll see right here.
And by the way, this is for public consumption right now on our website.
It is, yep, yep, I can actually, if it'd be helpful, I can show you kind of where.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so let me go fruta.org. Yeah. So let me go fruta.org. And then under City Hall, you can go to Administration, Finance. And then right here, right up top is the budget. And each time we update the budget as well, we will continue to provide this on the website. And then 2025 draft, I apologize about the lag. I'm not sure what's going on, but so here is the current draft of the budget. So let me pull up general fund. We also include bookmarks throughout. So navigation is very easy on the budget. So this was in our non-departmental program in prior years. So if you go down to the line item increases, there's also a narrative right here too, where I'm pretty sure I discuss it. Actually, I don't, so I should not have called that out.
You can still put it in.
Yeah, I can. So right here, we had $71,000 budgeted for personnel adjustments. This is what we would pull from if we had people contribute to the 457, we just transfer that to the other departments. That zeroed out next year. So that's $71,000 is now appropriated kind of throughout the general fund. You'll see it in Parks and Rec, you'll see it in all the other programs as well as just a general increase in retirement. So right here, it's more than the 5%.
Yeah. So right there, showing a 39. So yeah, you're showing a 39% increase there. So the opposite reduction is in that non-departmental. So it's more isolated for the reduction, but it's split out for the increase.
It is. Yeah. Yeah. And some of these increases too could vary based upon the department. Like if you have, you know, any staff changes or if like people have different wage rates in the prior year, you'll see something bigger. But yeah, for the most part, it should read between eight and 10% in there.
Hey Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, but also part of the change with this council member hands is, and you might've already said this, I'm repeating this again, but the we are in moving to a new provider for retirement. Now, every, every employee is required to pay in 3%. And in the past, we've only had about 50% putting 1% in. So, or one and a half percent, sorry, to get, to get this extra match that we provide. So the actuals probably change. I mean, the, this budget, you know, switching the line items is one thing, but actual spent will go up because you'll have 100% of full-time employees participating. So we will be 100%. We budgeted 100% for match, but we didn't always spend it all because not everybody participated.
Yeah, yeah. Which has always been our goal, just to kind of help improve our overall benefits package. We hope that people would contribute. So now with 100%, I think it'd be a great addition.
Jumping to the enterprise fund, I'm on page. Let's see where am I at? 339. So, you know, I can appreciate the need for increasing the rates for the sewer, especially where this is all per se consumption type of and or its enterprise.
Yeah.
It's a better word for it. So why are we not going to increase? Because I guess I look at the historical that you're presenting here on page 339, which is the charges, the revenues for the charges of services. And we've been flat since what we're showing here is just at least 2022. I don't know how much goes back further. So why are we, so and of course, costs have gone up since then.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, far too much. Why are we not proposing any increase here?
And is this for the?
This is the $135,000.
Oh, yeah, the irrigation. Yeah, you're right. So our costs have went up in the irrigation fund. We've had some changes as far as expenses, but you know, as with any of those, the budget has to be balanced. So we do still have contingency budgeted in the irrigation fund. So even though our expenses are less than our revenues, that's probably why we're not proposing an increase next year. Contingency is just your, how much your revenues exceed your expenses. So in a given year, that can fluctuate. I think we have 5,000 in the irrigation fund. So 6450. So that's just the difference between your revenues.
Yeah.
And your expenses. But no, some of that too is also just passed through what we pay for the water share. So we had a slight increase either last year, the year before, I have to go back and look. But I didn't always like, it wasn't always equivalent to the need for a rate change by the time you distribute it among the users.
And I just bring that up because
Oh, yeah.
Of course, like I can definitely appreciate it's like that we're, we're managing this and we for this, we're, we're breaking even, which I think is the goal.
Right.
Just cover the costs. I guess I just look at like the last few years, we've all various rates and
Yeah, yeah.
Some of our rates were, I know they were related to other matters, but we're, we haven't changed for 10 years.
Yeah.
Don't want to fall behind.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I think we, yeah, slight increase. I can't remember if it was 2022 or 2023, but that was just the the water share increase that we pass along.
Jumping to sewer. So how, so you were saying the Kings you were look, the key view dropping out, blanket on the term, the right or the
Lift station.
Lift station.
Yeah.
So the whole cost for that is 660 to 690. And you're saying that we're looking to get a grant to cover some of that.
We did receive $240,000 this year. So when we got, so we initially had the project budgeted in this year's budget, and I think we estimated right around 240. So now that we actually got the design complete, we figured out the actual cost of the equipment, but also some of the other things like that we have to add to it. That budget did go up. We do have a consultant that we work with for all of our wastewater projects. Council approved a five-year agreement with them, which has actually helped quite a bit to complete a lot of these projects, but they came back to us with a guaranteed maximum price of, I think, 696, if I'm remembering correctly, but it is more expensive than we initially budgeted, but we did get that grant to help offset that.
And where's the grant again?
It's from the Department of Local Affairs.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's great that they're helping out with, I guess.
Yeah.
Thirdish.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Of our thing.
Yeah.
And so I guess I'm looking here at page 359 and it talks about that. The 413, we talked about that a little bit. That's just your contingency again to that you're saying to
Grant match. Yep. Yep. So
Yeah, that's the grant match.
Yep, yep. So we will be probably applying for another Department of Local Affairs grant. They've been a great partner for the sewer projects. They've actually funded them quite a bit the last couple of years. So always want to applaud our Public Works Department for all of their work in securing those grants. But yeah, the contingency does still have to be approved by city council. So even tonight, when you approve the $25,000 for the executive recruitment, it has to be done through resolution. So if we do get a grant, we are awarded those funds, then council has the ultimate authority to approve those for use.
Last question is with trash. Do we have any, have we budgeted for any increases in new new homes in the community? Because I know like
Yeah.
It seemed like we didn't have too many CEOs last year. I think it was three, we had
Right.
Like 36 CEOs. I would anticipate that we're having
Pull that up.
For 24 and then going into
Right.
Five. And so I didn't, I saw some of that stuff was pretty flat. Are we considering the new, new homes being built in our community for
Yeah, we usually budget
Or an end.
Yeah, yeah. We usually budget 50 to 75, depending upon kind of what our planning department estimates or estimates. Interesting with our trash fund, we're actually spending less on a monthly basis since we're make, since we made the change to the cart for everyone, but also the recycling. So that's why you're not seeing the total 5% increase. If you look up here, it's roughly around a 2%. So we base that upon what we're actually paying. We're not just going to take the prior year budget. Let's add 5% on it. But what we're kind of seeing, it could even out at the end of the year. So we could make changes, but we can always make those changes mid-year as well. But yeah, we're being charged less. I don't know if people are throwing less things away, which they may be. I mean, recycling rates are very high and our diversion rate is actually the highest it's ever been. That's just what's normally would go to landfills being diverted for recycling. I think it's over 10%, which has always been our goal. So our expensive actually went down since council implemented the changes, which I think is interesting. So that's why you only see a slight increase overall.
Yes, I look at that with, with you saying that I see this as a good, a good experience from the decisions that we made with
Yeah.
Yes, the unlimited was, was a challenge that we had to communicate to get through. And but it seems like it's I guess I don't hear a whole lot of feedback. And so it seems like it was a good decision by council to change to manage our costs and manage services.
Yeah, I think eventually we were going to have to regardless whether it was waste management or another provider.
It, we're, it's helping us to manage our costs now.
Yeah.
Remember that nobody would offer unlimited trash service.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think that's the point that Shannon's working with, like it was inevitable. It's just what and we made a decision to do it now instead of in a couple of years or in a year to do it. And I do appreciate being able to manage our costs and keep our fees
Yeah.
reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
That's all. Thank you. Thanks, Shannon.
Of course. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, I had one more question. Sorry. Your, your pie chart talked about 18% of the sewer funds being towards collection. Is that like collection of funds?
Oh, yeah. So those are the different programs that we have within the sewer fund.
That's collections as in like AR
We have.
Or is it?
We have a collections program. Yeah. So these are just all the programs. So in our sewer fund, we have
This is the actual sewer collections, not collections of people payments. All right. I was like 18% to get people to pay or help pay the people bill.
No, we don't have 18% bad debt.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Yeah. So that's, yeah, yeah. There is so many programs throughout this budget. But yeah, that within the sewer fund, you have those ones kind of.
Yeah, I was like, that's a little high for
Yeah.
That seems 18% is high to collect funds.
Yeah. Yep, of course. Yeah. Thank you.
But don't want to cut you short. Any other questions?
Believe they're, they're good, good questions and discussions. But yes, I'm done for now.
Great. With that, no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So next, Mike, you are up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just thought I had no report, but a couple of directors gave me a couple of things to, to share with you. One is the pickleball courts at the community center will get started soon. We've got the full timeline. They will, by spring, we'll even have the final shade structures and things like that. So that'll be moving along and we'll share that timeline in a, in a weekly update. And then the other is trying to remember, I just, I just lost my train of thought, but I think, I think that was it. Start and pickleball courts. And then if you have a chance to meet our new finance director's spouse who relocated here, Noel is in the, in the audience in between. As you know, both they, they recently relocated and we're excited to have, have Joe and Noel into the community. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
We have another new face around here.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do. Yeah. So, so Katie's a new face, but, but not so new as well because she did a long internship with us. And we're excited to have her back. She is now, she's training tonight on the technology with Ciara, but she is our new administrative assistant in the city manager's office and who took Jennifer's role. And she did a communications internship while she was finishing her degree at CMU. So we're excited to have Katie with us. And she's, she started a few weeks ago and you will hear from Katie often, especially arranging RSVPs for events and registrations and things like that with the city council. She will be the point person for, for those types of items with you all.
She can rudely pull counsel.
Anything else, Mike?
Nothing else. Thanks.
All right. With that, we're going to move into council reports and action items. Amy, do you want to kick us off?
Um, I had a couple of community members ask me if we are going to have a farewell celebration for our wonderful Mike Bennett, city manager. And I did not know. I thought that was a good idea. Do we, do we have anything planned?
I said, yes. I'm hoping I was right.
Yeah, okay.
Surprises in the words you said.
The surprises in the words.
I mean, I'm not planning it, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Has a traitor's motif? No, I'm just kidding.
Ouch. All right. Anything else?
I think that's all I've got.
Andrea?
Fruit Arts and Culture Board meeting was moved to this week, so I'll actually have an update next time we meet about that. So I have nothing tonight.
I have nothing.
All right. I have nothing. Wow.
Nothing.
I got police commission tomorrow and other than that, nothing.
I've got my chamber meeting tomorrow at 7:00 AM. Just a couple of things of interest. I did get a call out of Mumbai. I work with the company out of there. Mike, the headless chicken is apparently amazingly popular there. Very, very funny. I did get some feedback on the rocks next to the amphitheater. Which I thought was interesting in that how they could be placed differently and more attractively and
Stand on this information. What? I don't know what you're talking about.
So next to the amphitheater.
The one that the children love and play on every day?
Yes. So I did get some feedback and there will be some Photoshop drawings of suggestions forthcoming. So I just want to bring that up. It's one of the more of some of the feedback we get. I thought that was kind of interesting. I want to thank Mike and Shannon, I'm not exactly sure who on the team for, I know we are putting in to do a couple of presentations at CML this year. Thank you for helping to facilitate that.
Yeah, Shannon and our assistant city manager, Shannon Vossen, and then our Parks and Recreation Director, Mark Mancuso, was working with Katie on the two different submittals that we will, those will be submitted. One has been submitted, one more will be submitted before the deadline for presentations at the Colorado Municipal League Conference this summer.
Thank you for helping put that together. I think it would be great if we get the opportunity as Fruta.
Do you need anything from us for any information for that?
Not yet.
Okay.
If we get approved and then we, right, this is just the submittal for it. I feel fairly confident, right, Katie? That we'll at least get one of the two. So and then once we find out that, then we'll start pulling it together. And that's really all I have on me for council, council reports and the action items. Last chance.
I did want to bring up the E, the E thing that they did. It was phenomenal. They did a really good job with it. We we had been waiting to get rid of something that we had in our yard and we were really excited to do it. And that it was ran very smooth, done very well. And I just wanted to compliment them on the way they handled it. It was very professional, very good. They were all in good spirits. They were very helpful. And I thought it was a great program and I'm happy we do it.
So next, we have some council meetings and workshops that we need to work on scheduling. On that. One of which I believe is Christmas and I'm trying to pull it up on the notes and
It's a Thanksgiving.
This is Thanksgiving.
One was just moved a week.
Right. So the one, and once again, I just lost all my notes. So I apologize. I don't have it up on my screen. Thank you. For the one on November 26th, that workshop. Is everybody good with rescheduling it to November 19?
In doing it.
At 5:30.
That's who we've got. And you're good. All right. So.
I don't like it.
I shouldn't have said anything.
All right. So you've got direction on that.
So what we're, we're canceling the 26th and
We're moving.
19th is that's, that's a held for workshop night anyway. So we'd be losing a night during the whole month is I just want to put that out that it's
Say it again.
So the 19th is
So it needs to be the 11th.
No, we're, what we're saying is what we, the only item for the fourth Tuesday, which is the one we're asking to essentially cancel, but we're, but we're saying reschedule that item for the 19th. So so we have a 5:30 to 6:30. And it's, this is just a kind of a budget wrap up. If there's any questions or kind of anything that's come up throughout all the presentations that we can have further discussion.
We still lose a night.
So, so yeah, we're, we're shortening one less meeting.
We're confirming that the ones can be long.
Basically, we have
You get one.
Three on your 530s.
You better be there.
Six, six, said yes.
So you're going. So you're going what from what's typically a two to four hour workshop to a one hour workshop on same night as another meeting.
Don't act like.
And you get another night off. That's good. Great. Thank you.
All right. So the last item is resolution.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor. Could we have a motion for the changes to the council meetings, please?
Well, I do. We really need to talk about.
Oh, I don't know. I guess.
I mean, I'm okay withholding it, but I suspect I'm the only one.
You are.
Canceling the December twenty four.
That's just canceled.
Correct.
Right. I think hello, it's your voice from above.
The voice of God, sir.
Sorry, I'm not there in person. I think Deb's asking for a motion because it just makes for a good record that you guys did agree upon the changes to the meetings. Thanks.
All right.
I move to reschedule the November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four city council workshop meeting to November nineteenth, twenty twenty four at five thirty PM and cancel the December twenty fourth, twenty twenty four city council workshop meeting. I can't.
First and second, any other discussion? None? Would you please kindly pull counsel?
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parish, Counselor Downs, Counselor Miller? Counselor Williams? Counselor Williams? Counselor Hansi?
Okay.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. So next item is agenda on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty three. Resolution approving agreement with Columbia LTD for executive recruitment services and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. So just as a reminder, council, we met, interviewed a number of firms, kind of talked it over. We looked at our preference during that meeting, which was Columbia. Did you get the bid back from it? Janine and I, well, I reached out to a number of the references we did hear back from one mayor. We talked for what twenty minutes? And what was your impression of that?
It's completely shiny, brilliant review. Yeah.
What mayor? What city was it?
So not only did they they hired him with another firm. Then he transitioned with.
Oh, really?
Columbia. And then they've used him a number of times since. So he's been a repeat customer.
Six times total.
They follow him, not the company. Okay, that's even better.
We and they're like always prompt, always professional, representative of the city. So there was no concerns there.
Good. So they felt listened to that their the requests were followed through.
Cool. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty three approving an agreement with Columbia LTD for executive recruitment services and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
First and second, any other questions? I just have to ask it once.
Come on.
Rudely.
Kindly rudely.
Kindly rudely.
It's the best I could get.
Counselor Parish. Counselor Downs. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi, Counselor Perser, motion passes six zero.
That's about as rude as Deb's ever gonna get.
I got the giggles.
All right. So with that, Mike or Mary Elizabeth, do you want to explain and go over executive sessions to the changes? We have that on record.
The process for how we're gonna do this. Is that what you're talking about? Okay. So Mayor City Council, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, City Attorney. You have four executive sessions tonight. As you are aware, motions for to go into executive session need to be held in open session. And therefore, in order to comply with open meeting laws to keep those recordings separate, what we are going to do is go ahead and go through, hold each motion now, one by one, to prove going into executive session. Those executive sessions will be held. You'll notice that there will be different people coming in and out of those executive sessions, which will cook the mayor will announce on under each one. Then you guys will be coming back out into open session after those four executive sessions have been held to take any action that may be required and to adjourn.
Oh.
All right now.
Correct.
Each session, though, needs its own motion.
Yes, we understand. We have.
So James can read the first one. Aaron can read the second one and we'll read them sequentially after that. Right. I need to read the mayor and.
Do you want me to start with? All right. I move to convene to executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four B and section CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two four two for E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and developing strategy for negotiations and informing negotiators with regard to the interim city manager contract.
Then the mayor and city council hereby invite following persons to attend the executive session, our city attorney, Mary Elizabeth Geiger.
And then do we need someone to second that?
Second.
Before we move on to the next one.
First, second, and then vote.
Who seconded, please? Okay. Counselor Downs. Counselor Miller? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi, Counselor Perser, Counselor Parish. Motion passes six zero.
Aaron, would you kindly read the second one?
I move to convene in the executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty four six four oh two four B and section CRS twenty four six four oh two for the purpose of receiving legal advice and developing strategy for the negotiations and informing negotiators with regard to the headwag headwater housing development proposal.
Second.
All right, hold on. You're getting ahead of yourself. Mayor and the city council hereby invite the following persons to attend this executive session. Special special counsel to the city of Fruta Dalton Kelly, city manager Michael Bennett, assistant city manager Shannon Vassen, planning and development director Dan Karas, and city attorney Mary Elizabeth Geiger.
Second.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi, Counselor Perser, Counselor Parish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs, motion passes six zero.
I move to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS section two four dash six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice in pursuant to section twenty four dash six four oh zero four A for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of property with regard to potential funding from a Prop one, two, three grant and potential partnership with IndyBill.
Mayor and city council hereby invite the following persons to attend this executive session. Special counsel of the city of Fruta Dalton Kelly, city manager Mike Bennett, assistant city manager Shannon Vassen, planning and development director Dan Karas, and city attorney Mary Elizabeth Geiger. First and second.
Counselor Williams, Counselor Hansi, Counselor Perser, Counselor Parish. Counselor Downs. Counselor Miller, motion passes six zero.
Would you read the fourth executive session, please?
Move to convene convene an executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty four dash six four oh two or B for the purpose of receiving legal advice with regard to nuisance abatement proceeding pursuant to Title Nine of the municipal code.
The mayor and the city council hereby invite the following persons to attend this executive session. City manager Mike Bennett, assistant city manager Shannon Vassen, chief of police David Dave Kraus, lieutenant Nick Peck, officer Ed Pacheco, and city attorney Mary Elizabeth Geiger.
Second.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser, Counselor Parish, Counselor Downs, Counselor Miller, Counselor Williams. Motion passes six zero.
Right. The Fruta City Council resumed the open session at the conclusion of all all four executive sessions on this agenda. So the time is now eight nineteen. Let's take a five minute break. And let's call it six minutes and we'll be back at eight twenty six. No, I said six minutes. Oh, eight twenty five.
I was waiting. I was waiting for it.
I
into open session or open meeting because before we adjourned does anybody have anything else that they would like to add?
I wanted to go over page forty nine in the budget.
All right, well, we're going to ignore. All right with that the time is now ten forty five we are officially adjourned. Thank you all.